Hey. So Ms. Tyson has joined the meeting. So. I'll wait a second until Ms. Tyson, I think it joined already for her. Can you hear us, Ms. Tyson? She's not connected yet. We'll give her a second. All right. Tyson, can you hear us? Hello?
I can hear you.
All right, just wanted to make sure. All right, so we can go ahead and start the meeting. We'll start with the call to order. So we're calling this meeting to order here at 6:10 PM on September 28, 2021. Mr. Secretary, if you'd call the roll.
Chair Arnold Valentine.
Present.
Member David Tate.
Present.
And Secretary Brendan Betts is present. We do have a quorum.
Perfect. All right, so we'll go through next the Pledge of Allegiance. So and I'll go ahead and mute ourselves if you want, just to avoid the chaos, or you can leave yourselves unmuted, however you prefer. All right, let me just stand here. I pledge allegiance.
By the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God.
Right, so I'm going to take a point of privilege here and prior to moving on to item four of the agenda for the approval of previous board minutes, I did want to convey, I know I've spoken with other board members throughout the last week, and I know the feeling is mutual, and so I wanted to express our condolences to member, to West Lafayette counselor James Blanco, who lost his girlfriend last week, and so we just wanted to let him know that we're thinking of him and he's in our thoughts and our prayers as well. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that before we jump on to business. So going on to previous board minutes for the approval of those, Brendan, you're all good to go on that.
Last we met, it was August 11, 2021. We called to order at 6:04 PM. On our roll call, we did have a quorum via Chair Valentine, Member Tate, and Secretary Betts. We sent the Pledge of Allegiance and approved the previous meeting's minutes. The fifth item we had was a township update from our trustee, and she responded to emails from August 6, 2021. At 8:24, she cited that and read from her email responses. I won't go into that here. We had a budget discussion. The board had requested a line item breakdown prior to the meeting, but in lieu of that, we opened the floor to the trustee's presentation. She gave her presentation. She spoke about the budget as well for fire protection. See, there was quite a bit of Q and A on the budget from the chair, as well as Deputy Lewis, Sherry Hertz, myself as well. David, Member Tate also had questions on the budget. Pardon me?
I don't know, somebody must have joined and it said recording in progress. If you could mute yourself, whoever just, I believe it was Maureen that just joined.
Okay, awesome. I'm settled in, it sounds like, so I'll continue on here. We did have public comment from Melanie Lindsay, as well as Jamie Roth. Melanie and Jamie each had follow-ups. We went ahead and stripped the agenda that evening, referencing the movement of funds to cover professional services from old business. We tabled the cemetery discussion and unanimous consent carried that motion. We reviewed our upcoming meetings, including this one here tonight, the chair did, and then Member Tate as well. Pardon me. David Tate as well noted that we would be, we would give our utmost efforts to send out an electronic copy of the agenda before the meetings, and we adjourned at 8:21 in the evening. Do I have any edits or additions to the minutes?
No, no.
Seeing none, I will move that we adopt the minutes from our last meeting, August 11 of 2021.
Seconded.
I will seek unanimous consent from the board.
All right, still given.
Excellent. Thank you, folks. We have our minutes adopted from our previous meeting. Oh, and pardon me, I did want to say, I will scan with my signature in that we've all adopted this, and so I will scan and email that to the other two board members. If you're, if you folks are comfortable with that, on hold, I think we've done electronic in the past, but I thought that might be simplest.
Yeah, you can, you can send those over. I do, I did start paying for a subscription to be able to send electronic signatures and stuff, so I can set it up, so.
Okay, I'll just email you the document then, is that right?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
So going prior and just to explain how this will work, so we have section five, which is the township update, with the update from Office of the Trustee and the update from the Fire Department, and after that, we'll enter the public hearing portion. I'll need, Ray, I'll need a little bit of help making sure that we do that appropriately, so that we specify that portion and how we convene exactly, all right? All right, perfect. Then going on to the next bit here, as I said, we have the township update. So first, we have the update from the Office of the Trustee, so as per the last, as per our rules of Tyson, Ms. Tyson, you have five minutes. If you would like to have a statement prior to the budget, public hearing.
I do not.
Then we'll move on to the Fire Department. I believe, I believe Jim Lewis is here. Jim, is there an update from the Fire Department?
I do not have anything at this time.
You don't have anything at the moment?
That's correct.
All right, perfect. All right, so here's where I'll need your help, Ray, so for make sure that I do this right in convening a public hearing. What specifically needs to be done, sir?
So you need to call, spend the regular meeting and, and ask to start a public, a public hearing. And then from there, you'll convene the, the public hearing, and there'll be the budget presentation. There'll be an opportunity for comments, and then you'll seek a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
All right, perfect. So I just presented a motion to suspend the regular meeting. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, I'm seeking unanimous consent to be able to suspend the meeting.
So given.
All right.
Yes.
So I will be calling to order, to call, calling to order a public hearing. Is there a second to call the public hearing to order?
Second.
All right, and I'm assuming Brendan that you're also in favor.
Correct, you are giving unanimous consent.
All right, so then we'll move on to item six of the agenda, which is the budget proposal, which will be handled by Ms. Tyson. Let me double check. Do you need to share a screen?
I do not.
All right, Jen, you're all good to do the budget presentation.
Do you have the?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you well there.
Have the budget in front of you, the published amounts?
Yes, I do.
Do you have the, yeah, so you all have the documents then?
What, what you submitted over email, yes, the five lines.
On Gateway, for. Correct, so we're wired on Gateway to publish our budget, and so I just wanted to make sure that all three of you have that information in front of you.
Yeah. Ms. Tyson, you are having a little bit of like technical difficulties, we're struggling to hear you well. Just double checking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you right now, yes.
I was, I was terrified that you have.
That's coming through very. Yeah, Ms. Tyson, it's coming through very broken. I, I think that she dropped from the meeting by accident there. I think that her connection's unstable.
It sounds like a bad connection there. Um, here she's back, I think.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, would, would you be able, yeah, would you be able to connect by phone to make sure that we don't get dropped again there?
Well, I am on my phone.
All right, you're coming through much more clearly.
Much clearer, yeah.
Connected, I connected to Wi-Fi, and I think that that will help.
All right, so you were saying, sorry, we couldn't hear you at all.
Okay, I'll just start over. So the, so the, the question that I was asking, the point I'm trying to make is on hell, if you'd like to share the budget documents with everyone else, if you'd like to share your screen, if you have that up, that would, that's fine.
With me, give me, um, give me a second and I'll pull them up.
Okay.
I had it on my second screen, so.
Oh, okay.
All right, just want to make sure everybody can see what's on the screen right now.
I can.
All right.
Yes.
All right, you can go ahead then.
Okay. So as you may know, we are required by the state to publish our budgets on Gateway. That's what this document is. We get an estimate from the state of what our levy, our tax levy will be. And so I think the takeaway here from the budget is that I attempted, as always, this is not new, but I attempted to maximize our levy, so all of the tax money that we would be eligible for, we would receive. And the only thing different from this from last year is that I did not include an emergency fire loan. So I'm not recommending that the board do a additional fire loan, because we have no consensus on a, a long-term plan for the Fire Department. My recommendation has not changed. I still believe that we should do a fire district and have full-time paid firefighters with health insurance and retirement benefits. That's all I have.
All right, so. Second here. I'll leave it here, so let me pull up the agenda on my other screen. All right.
Yes, will there be, will there be a, how these numbers were calculated, or is this just for us to interpret?
All right, I believe that was a question for Ms. Tyson.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute myself. I'm on my phone here. So I, I don't, I don't know that there's a calculation per se other than we receive an estimate from the state of what our tax levy is, and we overestimate those numbers to be sure that we receive all of the tax dollars that we are eligible to receive.
Okay.
It's kind of how the system works, so it's not like a mathematical calculation. I was on the phone with our financial advisors, and we reviewed it to try to ensure that we get all of the available tax dollars.
Good, and is, is there a, I guess that we informally entered section 6B, which is opportunity for questions and discussion regarding documents and our answers provided by trustee Tyson, which was going to be the next part anyway.
Okay.
So the, so going on there, I wanted to double check, is there any supporting document that specifies like the breakdown of the specific funds? How like it'll fall into different categories, including, you know, professional services, et cetera, all of those categories, as they tend to be.
Is that, is that called a Form 1?
I don't have the form number in front of me. I wouldn't want to verify that, but no, this is, the initial budgets, presentation and documents are what you see in front of you. We don't do a breakdown until, well, I can't do a breakdown until I have some guidance of what the board is doing or thinking, or what questions you have. So the, the important piece, I think, or I mean, I don't know if it's the important part, but I mean, I think the reason why state starts with this document, the way that it does, is that, you know, the board can move money from each line item in each of these funds, how they see fit throughout the year. But we cannot move funds, money from fund to fund, and we cannot request more.
Okay, you went silent.
I don't know if she went silent or, or her connection dropped. I think it dropped.
I fell. I think I muted myself on accident. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know where I muted myself, but the, I think that the reason why the state does this, this way is because this is what we cannot change after setting the budget. I mean, you can, but you have to go through a whole separate process, so.
So I just have a, a question, because this is my first budget review. I'm, I'm new at this, so I'm looking at the 66-216 max levy, and with a general fund at $75,000 and township assistance at 50. And if I, if I do some simple math, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, it seems to me that we're $58,000 and change over the max levy. And I'm not sure if I'm.
Again, we overest, no, no, you're not. We're, we overestimate to ensure that we get all of the levy available to us. That's intentional.
Okay, does, and I'm asking once again, Jennifer, because you've done this and I haven't, does this, does the state, does the state correct this then, or is this?
Yeah, that's correct. So the state, the state will come back and say, based off of the, so what they give us is an estimate, right? What they, what the state gives us is an estimate. So we overestimate, then we submit our overestimation, then they come up with the actual levy from the counties, and then they send us a notice that says, here's what your actual levy is.
Okay.
And so you don't want to leave money on the table, right? I mean, it, well, I mean, I guess you would want to if you had more than enough, but in our situation and Wabash Township situation, as we have repeatedly stated, or I have stated, that we do not have enough funds to, to do all of the things that we want to do. And so we would not want to miss out on any funds that are available to us. And so that's why we overestimate their, their estimate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can I just, we'll say one more thing? So I think this is important for the board to understand, and not having been through this before, this might, you might not have seen this, David. The, you also have to stay, so the board can change this note, they, they can change these numbers, right? You can say, oh, no, I don't want to do this. I want to do X, Y, Z. But these numbers have been published to the public, which means that you can change them, but you can't raise them. You can lower them, but you cannot raise them. So what is published to the public is the largest amount that we can ask the state for. So again, I, I didn't want to put us in a position where you did not have room to do what you wanted to do.
Right. Yeah, um, I, I haven't really seen, last year, I know when we did the process, I believe we saw and basically what is equivalent to the Form 1 that Mr. Tate mentioned, which outlines like within each fund, what we would be spending that money on, on that's necessary for approval of a budget.
I don't know that I would disagree with that. La, last year was a very different scenario. I, I completely agree that the budget of last year was, we were working with different things. For one thing, you know, I've been asking to receive information from the Fire Department for months, and I've also asked that I meet with each one of the board members individually to get their ideas. And so without input, I think that puts us at a serious disadvantage. So what you see here is basically no change from last year, other than the things that I've stated. So the budget is exactly the same as last year, and with the overestimate, so that we can receive our, our levy.
Okay, so will, Jennifer, will there be a time where, as a board member, we got to look at that Form 1, which actually details rather specifically the income and expenses under each of those fund items? It might help me see how you do, what you do?
I'd be happy to meet with you anytime, David. Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
As always, yep.
Thank you, thank you. Is that something that's publishable? Is that something that is out there somewhere?
I mean, it, you guys can, you guys can put it on your website if you'd like, sure.
Again, and where would we go to get that specific line item?
I mean, you could, you could look at the one from last year, for starters.
I'm, I'm really interested in January through September.
Okay, well, January through June of this year is what's used for this budget year, and it's on the website, it's on my website.
Okay, and the last month reported on what you just mentioned would be what?
June. January through June is what is available for the budget season.
Okay, and when we meet in October, will July and August be listed?
I don't know. I don't want to make promises. I've had some issues with the software that have been quite difficult to fix. I'm working on it with some other folks, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay, and perhaps, and I know because you carry the burden of responsibility for this, and with the issues with the software, maybe since that's October-ish, maybe an estimate on your part as to where you see these line items go, so that we kind of see what, what is the end of the year balance that you would just estimate, since those obviously must haven't occurred yet.
I mean, I know, yeah, I mean, I can tell you what's been, if you can tell me what you're looking for exactly, I'm sure I can help you. It's not an issue to get you, the, the reports are just a matter of, again, it's a, it's a simple issue, I think, in our software, and not just, not just Tom's Web. I'm talking about Prime Pay specifically, but it's not, I mean, it's not like I don't know what the expenses were in July and August. I don't understand what the, if you have specific questions, I'm sure I can tell you exactly what they are, like when we met, you know, I can tell you.
It's not specific until I look maybe at July and August, and then look at the monthly reports that if you haven't processed them yet, then an idea of what you would think they would be.
I mean, we have the bank statements.
Well, I just like to see the line item, I'd like to see the line item by fund.
Okay, and for the funds of what's available?
I think, maybe I'm, maybe I'm making this more difficult than it needs to be. I'd just like to see a monthly report of all the line items.
Yeah, we.
Okay, I don't know that we'll have that before the October meeting, but I'm happy to go through all of the expenses with you and the line items and the funds and anything else that you might have a question about.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to beat a pinata over and over again, but I think that those reports that we're asking for are the same reports that we ask for every month, and that they'd be provided by the end of.
They are.
By the meeting of the next month, which, as you said, the last one that's been provided is June, even though we asked that by the third week of the following month, we could receive the reports from the previous month, so that we're.
I mean, you couldn't be any more frustrated than I am that I can't get the reports that I need from our payroll company, so I hear you.
Well, those, those are mostly on Gateway, but.
Our payroll reports are not on Gateway.
The reports that we're asking for from the specific.
They are not on Gateway. They are not on Gateway. We have not uploaded them to Gateway. If they were on Gateway, you could go and get them. Yeah, they're, they are not on Gateway. We have, we have a payroll reporting issue where I cannot get into their system, and I have been trying to work through that with them for weeks now, and I, they say that the problem is on our end, and it most certainly is not. So I don't know what else to do.
Um, and just so that we, the reason why we're asking for those reports is because we cannot see them on Gateway. They're not visible on the public side of Gateway.
No, but I'm saying the board members have access to.
We do, we do not.
You could have, all you have to do is contact them. It's a very simple process, and you could do that, but they are not on Gateway, so that. But they are not on Gateway, so that would be irrelevant in this scenario.
Right, as we've verified before, we cannot get unilateral access to Gateway. It needs to come from the executive, but.
You can get a login. I have also verified this.
Uh, just, just so we can close this kind of headbutting here for just a minute. I think, Jennifer, you're trying to get done what, what you can do and we're trying to get done.
I can't, I am.
So if it would be simpler, what, what's not loaded up, I think you are saying it and we're saying it is in order to do the best job we can for the township, we would like to see whatever you have up to that October 12th date. And then if you can project ahead, just an estimate of looking at the expenses of the previous year, this current year of where you would estimate we would stand in these major line items. That would help me immensely. I know it's not going to be exact, that's okay. It's just like looking at your savings account, your checking account through the year. So you've done this before, you've run a business, I don't think it'd be that difficult. And if it's a problem with the software, geez, let's pay somebody to come in and bang that up so you can do your job. Does that, does that sound okay?
I guess that's what I'm saying is that we have the bank statements. So you can come look at the bank statements, which are the exact same document.
If you would be able to send.
In a different format.
If you would be able to send it to us, that would be appreciated. I mean, I.
Hey, we'll start with that.
Yeah, David obviously is able to.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna send, I'm not gonna send the bank statements. But you can come into the office and we can meet and I will go over the bank statements with you.
All right, we'll, we'll start with that and see where it goes.
Okay.
Let me, before we go on that route, it would be very beneficial if you could send them because Brendan and I have full-time jobs. We're not able to meet during the hours of the township that's open.
Oh, on hell. I'll make special time just for you if you want to come in and have a meeting.
All right, then we can schedule that for this week so that we can, I do for that next week. All right, and we'll really, at least as for myself, I, I'll really need to see a Form 1 estimate. We can't vote on this, just.
And can I get a point of clarification, Chair? In the past, the trustee, and I'd like, and I could ask this directly, but as a point of clarification, in the past, the trustee has asked for these one-on-one meetings to be furnished with attorneys on both sides. Is that still a standing request?
I've never asked for you to have your own attorney. The township provides an attorney, the township attorney serves both you and I. And Ray is more than happy to attend these meetings.
I'll bet he is.
I'll take that as a yes then, that there is still a request to have our counsel present for these meetings, which is exactly what I just said.
Or counsel. Oh, okay. You said separate counsel.
He represents each of us in his capacity. That's correct, the board and the trustee. So when I say you, for both sides, that is exactly what you just highlighted. Regardless, is that still the request?
I am happy to have Ray attend these meetings or we can record them.
Can we move on?
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so at least as for myself, before we jump onto the next bit, we really need to see a Form 1 because the top, just seeing these numbers is, it's it's not a number that you can, that I can vote on. So we'll need to.
Again, with feedback from the board, it, with feedback from the boards, I would be happy to provide you with the Form 1. I have not completed the Form 1 because I do not have any input from the board or the fire department about the long-term plan for the township. Now, I will add with that, that the Township Association has agreed to sit down at the 1st of October and have a meeting regarding the long-term plan for the township.
Okay, I'm, I'm really confused here. I, I don't know what the quote, "long-term plans for township" and the upcoming budget has anything to do with what we're asking.
It has, it has everything to do with the budget process. I mean, we have no, we, oh, okay, well, we do it very differently then. It definitely has everything to do with my budget and I'm the one that recommends the budget. So I, that is something that I would definitely take into account is what are we doing to have paid firefighters with health insurance and retirement benefits, which has been my agenda since I started. So it's very relevant.
Yeah, we felt that all the way along, but I think just, just so we can get through with this thing, uh, I think if we can concentrate on this upcoming budget to get us through '21 and '22, I think then we could move on to the future.
David, I'm not just trying to get through this. I'm trying to do it right. This is not some, this is not some pain point that we just have to, let's just get over this.
I, I understand and now that gets back to our significant question of if we don't have the Form 1s, this isn't going to happen.
Okay, well, as you told me in our last meeting, and as I explained to you, the fire department is very important to me. So they are, have agreed to meet with me at the 1st of October. And I think that I would have a lot more information to share after I have input from them about the budget.
Excellent, good, thank you.
Um, all right. Brendan, do you have anything further to add? Assuming no, but just wanted to give you an opportunity.
I appreciate that, Chair. Thank you. At this time, I do not think so. I think that there's nothing new I can add there.
Yeah, all right, so this, before we close it out, to reiterate, we'll really need to see those Form 1s. We'll also need to see if you, there, if you plan on having any update to the salary resolutions as we did last year as well. Um, those are all interrelated one to another.
So the salary resolution, resolution always comes after the approved budget. So that would be after these meetings.
Yes, but we would have to see what that looks like. Same as we did in previous years, including last year, when the salary resolution that was proposed came along with the budget proposal and the Form 1.
It has not changed. It has not changed from last year. Just to be clear, nothing has changed on this budget except trying to get the maximum levy.
All right, so we're keeping the same salaries for everybody, including the three paid firefighters that are on the salary resolution.
With a 2% increase for cost of living, which was the same as last year. My plan for the township has, I just want to make it clear, you seem confused. There are no documents. There are no documents that you do not have on hell.
Well, there need to be those documents because they're necessary, but moving on to the next item.
The state disagrees with you.
Well, the state isn't voting on this. We need to see those documents so that we can make a determination. It, it's not about doing the bare minimum to scrape by. It's about actually having the documents that allow us.
This is not about the bare minimum. This is about a starting point. The, this document that was presented to you this evening is to start a conversation about where I am and where you are about the budget. With feedback from the board and then even more so the fire department in the 1st of October, we can make many changes to this. Well, except, again, except for the things that I have stated clearly in this meeting.
Can, can we just all agree that Jennifer will get more information after she's met with the fire department, which will help us then maybe move on with this budget that she's presented? Can we move on to something else now?
Yeah. Um. So going on to then the item eight, the opportunity for public comment and communications. Prior to opening up for people, I know we've gotten a couple of questions. And I'll read them into the record. Brendan, these are available on the board shared email account. So I'll do the stop, I'll stop sharing here for a second so that I can open those documents with them. All right. So. And I'll start here with the, the first person, we, we got questions. I, I know that Ms. Tyson responded to some of them from Patty Mason. Prior to that, and, but we'll still read it into the record so that a lot of people are aware. Question that we got, and we'll make sure if, if they didn't send them to you, Ms. Tyson, we'll make sure to forward these to you as well. So this is the first email Mr. Thomas Moore sent. Can you please supply each projected fund balance for 1231 2021? This would represent the starting fund balance for the 2022 budget. Item two, I just want to make sure the emergency loan balance will be zero before the end of 2021. Wabash Township will not have an emergency loan balance at all in the 2022 budget. Uh, question three, does the 2022 budget have any paid firefighting positions in it? How many and at what expense? And this isn't the part of the question that he had, but going back to the salary resolution and how that looks in a Form 1, I think is a question that he had as well. Question four, with inflation significantly rising, parentheses, at least 5%, and parentheses, how that you incorporate this into your 2022 budget? And question five, can you please provide full-year projected 2021 expense category, account balances and compare them to your 2022 budget? What are the variances and why? Is the first set of questions that Mr. Moore sent. He also sends a couple other ones, so I'll be reading them here. Can you please supply information concerning Wabash Township loans and debt balances? I would assume that current balance information is available through August 31st, 2021. I would guess that we have borrowing debts, borrowing slash debt for one, fire apparatus, two, fire station or stations, three, emergency loan, four, credit card debt, and five other debt. Specifically below, I've listed items that I would like details to. Loan slash borrowing slash debt type, i.e. fire apparatus, loan slash borrowing slash debt creditor name, loan slash borrowing slash debt origination date. Now, it's all about loan or borrowing or debt, so the other stuff are original amount, interest rate, contractual payment amount, contractual maturity date, next payment due date, current or past due, current balance, projected balance 1231 2021, and projected balance 1231 2022. Then, the third set of questions. Uh, extraordinary, extraordinary turmoil-related events, events have occurred beginning, I believe, in 2020. The township trustee has engaged legal counsel and/or is utilizing our contracted township attorney. Therefore, I can only assume that legal expenses have risen and are currently impacting the Wabash Township financials. Can you please provide the following financial information concerning legal and legal-related expenses? 2022 full-year legal expense, 1231 2021 projected full-year legal expense, year-to-date actual legal expense, assumed through August 31st, 2021. 1231 2020 full-year actual legal expense, I'm assuming that he means for the year 2020, calendar year 2020, um, as well as 1231 2019 full-year actual legal expense. So those were the questions that Mr. Moore had. I.
Okay, can I just ask a quick clarification? Is he, did he send those to me prior to today's meeting?
I do not know. We received them on our inbox. That's why I'm saying that if you haven't received them, we can forward them to you.
Okay, well, I, I don't, I don't think I was included on that, so.
Chair, can we just forward all of the questions that we received to the trustee to ensure that she's received them following this meeting? And then maybe have a chance to address them in our next meeting as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to read them into the record. I did not expect her to have an answer if she hadn't sent them.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. All four reading them into the record and getting them there. But I just want to clarify that we will send them to her to give her a proper time to, or a proper chance to respond.
Yep, and, and I'm sending those right now, so she'll be getting them prior.
Can you CC me on that as well, please, Chair?
Uh, I already sent two of them, but I can CC you on the third one and CC you on the original.
I appreciate it.
Right after, yeah. So. All right. Um, so those are the ones that we, oh, and I'll read the ones that Patricia Mason sent. I know that Ms. Tyson has received those. I saw some responses to that, but I'll make sure to include them in for the record. Um, and then as well, if you can, I know that there was a response from both Member Tate and then Member, and then Trustee Tyson. So if you could also include those in the record, I'll make sure to forward those to you as well if you haven't seen those, Brendan. But I'll read them out loud for the purpose of people in the meetings here today. The following question, this word, the following question needs to be addressed, and this is Ms. Mason's, like, email. The following questions need to be addressed by the trustee and asked by the board if this email is ignored. In 2020, was the $63,102 expenditure from the emergency loan fund a proper expenditure? When the proceeds of a loan, loan are received, they are deposited in the fund for which the loan was requested. The 2021 budget ordered by DLGF, the loan was to be posted to the fire operating fund. However, it was deposited in the emergency loan fund. What was that? Question mark. All during 2021 expenditures were posted in the loan fund. The loan must be paid back by the end of 2021 and that payment is estimated in the 2021 dispersments of the emergency loan fund. Consec- consequently, the dis- the dispersments will exceed the 2021 budget for that fund. How do you explain that? Why does the general fund need additional revenue? Why is a levy of $75,000 needed when the end-of-year balance in that fund will all, will be almost a total budget requested? $170,000 requested versus cash balance estimated at $169,808. The township is expecting to receive a local income tax distribution of $135,000. Roughly, it was $1 off. The board needs to decide where that money goes. The money in that fund without a levy would be $304,807. Why is a levy needed? This general fund need, really needs to be explained fully unless there are multiple employees, that level of funding is absurd. What is the total revenue available to the fire department from all funds? The cash balance of the emergency fund and fire fund and the proposed levy and miscellaneous revenues from excise slash vehicle taxes totaled to about $617,000.
We want to sit in here and listen. Let's shut your computer.
Sorry. There you go. $617,700 and that, that doesn't include the board adopted transfer of $500,000. Limiting the fire department to $230,000 is a crime when the total available is considered. In order to fully understand the situation, I need to see Form 4B for each fund. It exists because it had to be completed prior to advertising the budget needs to be shared. I requested the current balance in each fund and what expenditures are planned for the rest of the year. How will the fire department function? No plans are in place, which explain how the funds for the fire departments will be spent, but the board and the public need to know. And. And. Um, and this Tyson responded to the first part of the question to say, I followed the advice, hello Patricia, I followed the advice of our financial counselor, and it is my understanding, this was the correct way to document the emergency loan money. It is not my understanding that the dispersments will exceed the twenty twenty one budget, and I'm not sure that I understand that conclusion. If you have follow-up numbers on this, I'm happy to review. Thanks. Um, regarding the revenue, the general fund question, um, thank you for your question, Patricia. The township needs to make some big decisions regarding the long-term sustainable plan for funding the fire department and township assistance. We have seen that the township has exceeded its revenues many years in the past. Considering that we all agree or did, I have been requesting meetings with the board and fire department since April of this year to discuss these issues. And my requests have been denied. The township has been in crisis and without a plan for the growth we are experiencing. I will continue, parenthesis, even if I'm alone at this, and parenthesis, to look out for the best interest of the township by requesting that we have a long-term plan for the fire department, have a short-term and long-term plan for township assistance. Request all available levy from the state to fund these programs. My plans for staffing and how to fund those positions have not changed. My plan for the expenditures in twenty twenty one have not changed. Please refer to the Jan to June report for fund balances and expenses through the first half of the year. This is the document used for budget meetings for townships. Please see my answer above and then about the questions about the fire department. Regarding your last three questions, please refer to my answers above. I look forward to meeting between myself and the fire association that has been agreed upon to discuss these longstanding issues in our township. It is my understanding it will take place the first of October. This time council and I are waiting for final date from the association council. I think we have a great deal to share. We will have a great deal to share after the meeting. Um, so just wanted to read a response of that, and then, uh, now open it to anyone in the meeting that themselves has a comment to make. I just wanted to make sure that the common of people that submitted previously over email, um, were, uh, included as well. Um. So, uh, going to the public comment area, um. Is there any, uh, public comment regarding the budget? We're still in the public hearing portion of the meeting. If there is, so you can unmute yourself or, uh, raise your hand, however you prefer, um, seeing as it is fully online. I'll give people another thirty seconds if they have anything. I know computers are hard if they want to comment.
And any, obviously I'll answer any questions that I receive via email as well.
Alright, I think there's no public comment at this moment. Um, so we will, oh. Is there, I will move that we close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, and I seek unanimous consent.
So given.
Right. Alright, and I move to, uh, go back and, uh, and return to the original meeting as scheduled. Um, outside of the public hearing portion that was as mandated by, uh, law. Um, is there a second to begin the meeting?
Second.
Alright. Seeking unanimous consent.
So given.
Alright, um, so we moved to old item nine, which was old business. Um, we had on there, we had removed most of the items on there at last, at the last couple of meetings. Um, the only ones that we had were the review of budget considerations regarding cemeteries. Um, specifically about the frequency of mowing, uh, mowing contract information and necessary upgrades and maintenance. Um. I do not believe we've received anything from Ms. Tyson prior to the meeting, but, um, if you have anything, Ms. Tyson, you can add it.
I, I'm sorry, is there a question about the mowing?
Yeah, these, these were questions that were posed at one of the, well, they've been posed at previous meetings and still in the old business item. We're, we're waiting for responses on those areas.
Oh, did you email those to me?
Well, they were in the attached agenda and, and have been asked previously in previous meetings. Um, and I believe we.
I did not review those. No. I, so as far as the mowing goes, I am very, I thought I addressed all of those. I said that I was very happy with who has done our cemetery maintenance.
Yeah. Hey, uh, Jennifer, just real quick. I haven't been out and looked at sand ridge. I know you had, uh, Mr. Hill take down at least one of those trees. Uh, do you know if there's any of those other trees that pose a hazard to any of the grave sites?
Uh, you mean the ones that are still standing? Or you mean that have fallen?
Well, uh, when I was out there last time weeding around some of the upper, uh, grave sites, there was at least one tree. And I haven't been out maybe since Mr. Hill cut down the tree, but there were a couple that either were dying or dead. And, uh, I've had some, uh, stakeholders or people have family out there asked about that. I said, we were taking care of it. So I just wanted to pass that on. I, I can go out tomorrow and look at that, maybe take a picture and send it to you.
Okay, I have certainly not assessed any of the trees that are standing.
Okay, some of those are really large and they're, uh, it would take quite a bit to chunk one of those down. So I don't know if that's something Mr. Hill does. It would have to contract out.
I, it, I can, I'm happy to meet you out there and to assess them, and I'm sure he would as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, and, yeah, and, uh, I know that we'd, we'd mentioned it prior to today, so, um, if you could, for the next meeting, um, just, it, it's not nothing too complex. We wanted to have the information as to how frequent mowing, uh, how fre- the frequency of the mowing at the cemeteries, uh, obviously the biggest one being a sand ridge, but we also serve other cemeteries too. Um, as well as the mowing contract information for the information for, for the.
So Sandridge has currently been under the niches contract, which I thought that I responded that I am not satisfied with the level of care that has been taken by niches and that I would not recommend that contract for next year. As far as the rest of our cemeteries go, um, that mowing is done regularly, and I have been very pleased with what Mr. Hill has done, and I would be, um, I will be working with him next year.
I will have to, I will have to agree that, uh, I went out and looked at the other three cemeteries and they were very well taken care of even, uh, around the fences, especially the one that's over by Meyer and the one that's, uh, right there on, uh, Airport Road. Uh, very well taken care of.
Right, and, and then.
He does a great job.
And the third one being, um, and, and this.
It's, yeah, it's right over here on, uh, five hundred, but before you get too tapped through.
Sorry, yes, no, I, I meant the third item on the.
Oh, sorry.
Of the necessary upgrades and maintenance, if you could provide us what those are, um, just as we start to look at those. Uh, it's a longstanding issue we.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again. What are you looking for? The, the mowing?
Basically a report for, like, when it comes to cemeteries, the, no, the, the frequency of it, which just more specific, like how often it's being happening.
It's done whenever it needs to be done. That is exactly my exact words, is that how often it needs to be done. I think that it's not supposed to go over two inches.
Alright, and then the, the third one being for.
Because, so just to clarify, the reason that I say that and that I don't give you a specific time period is that depending upon the rain and the season and the, all, that changes every year, right?
And that's, and that's an okay answer. So that's, that's fine. We just wanted to make sure that we had like some information on that. And then the last one being for the, for the cemeteries that we serve, whether there are any necessary upgrades or maintenance that needs to be, um, accounted for future years. Um, and I think that we can be a little bit more expansive and, and be a little bit of a bare minimum and, and asking that. So if you could come up with some information about what those are.
The maintenance of the, the ongoing infrastructure of the cemetery is, that's a very hard thing to estimate. As David said, you know, or alluded to, I guess. Depending upon nature and, uh, timing, when trees fall, where they fall, did they hit a fence? Um, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you've been out to all of our cemeteries and you've looked at all of the signs. And I have never recommended that we change the signs, even though they have the prior trustee's name on them. Um, so I mean, they're certainly out of date, but I would not put my name on them because that dates them. And so that costs the township money every time there's a change in administration. So, I mean, that would be a very difficult thing to estimate. And so what I believe has been done in the past, and most certainly what I have done throughout my entire term, is just to keep a standardized amount in the budget so that if we have a tree fall on a fence and we have to replace the fence, that we have that available to do so.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and so basically going like, just to like clarify, beyond that, like normal maintenance, are there other upgrades or anything that you foresee that the township will need to have?
No.
Area.
I wouldn't recommend anything. No.
Um, alright, so hearing so, then I think that we can move this item then out of the old business. Is there a second to?
Second.
Alright, um, I seek unanimous consent for that.
Again.
Alright. So the future dates for meetings for twenty twenty one, um, going on to agenda item ten will be the October twelfth, twenty twenty one amended budget, second reading, budget adoption. Um, or, you know, or the board will vote on it. And then, uh, the second, the, the other one would be the October nineteen, twenty twenty one meeting if, if needed, uh, as a backstop opportunity. Um. Other than that, um, I, I, I want to offer a clarification here. So going on to the October twelfth meeting, um, we're in an interesting situation. We don't foresee that the governor will not extend the emergency order. At the time that we published the notice, uh, cases, uh, were still rising significantly in typically ones surrounding counties. And seeing as, uh, you have two board members, uh, who would be more likely to be affected by the virus um, due to age and also health, uh, issues, et cetera. Um, we decided to move it to fully online for the budget hearing and for the, uh, opportunity to vote on it. Um, so those two meetings have been scheduled to be online, uh, so the one today and then October twelfth. Um, and barring the, the governor not reauthorizing that executive order, then we would continue to have the October twelfth meeting fully online as described during the, uh, in the notice that was posted to Gateway. Um, just wanted to give a little bit of clarification as to why that happened and, um, also how it'll work for that upcoming meeting as well. So the upcoming meeting, you can expect to be fully online. Um, I hope that, uh, cases will decrease and that, um, in due time, we can return back to being in person at least per, like partially. Um, but I know that, uh, this ongoing health crisis has been a little bit difficult. Um, so, uh, sorry for my commentary there. Um, I would, the chair would now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move, second, whatever.
Alright, is there a second on the motion?
There is a second on the motion.
Uh, guys. Say aye.
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 Alright, uh, so this meeting is thus adjourned at seven twelve PM. Um, and we'll be meeting back on October twelfth, uh, at six PM again.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.